Okay, we're going to pay honor tonight to some of our auxiliary police officers. They kind of, I guess I'll say a little bit of the young sun, sun heroes. You see them directing traffic, you see them out there patrolling. And they're out there doing it unarmed compared to our police officers. So, I give them a little credit for that. And we got a situation here where some of them were patrolling in some housing back here, and they came across some folks with some drug paraphernalia and shoot them off, and got the paraphernalia under control and cut it off the street. And that's what these people do for us, and they do it as volunteers. So with that, I'm going to ask Sergeant Margarita Tamarit, Corporal John Egan, state... So I'm going to read the proclamation. So whereas the city of Long Beach, which is to recognize those individuals and organizations that have contributed positively to the people and community at large, and whereas the city of Long Beach does desire to acknowledge graduate, graduate, Sergeant Margarita Tamarit, Corporal John, I think you heard it, Gagan? Gagan, sorry. And Police Officer Whalen? Of the Long Beach Auxiliary Police Department in recognition of their actions during a vertical patrol of 415 National Boulevard on the night of Monday, January 6, 2020. And whereas Sergeant Tamarit, Corporal Gagan, Gagan, sorry, and Police Officer Whalen, during the course of the vertical patrol of the 415 National Boulevard, a Long Beach Housing Authority property, discovered a man acting suspiciously. Upon further investigation, the man was found in possession of drug paraphernalia, and after dropping the items was ejected from the premises. As per protocol, and they safeguarded the contraband quickly and alerted the police department. And now therefore, the city council, the city manager, the city alumni, in commendation of Sergeant Tamarit, Corporal Gagan, Gagan? And Police Officer Whalen, for that quick and decisive action to ensure the safety of housing authority residents and further discourage such activity, proudly present this proclamation. And I just want to acknowledge Auxiliary Police Commissioner Dennis Verzi is here as well.
Good evening, and welcome to the regular meeting of the council of the city of Long Beach on Tuesday, February 4, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Local Councilmember Delory?
Here.
Councilmember Mandel?
Here.
Councilmember Trusman?
Here.
Vice President McGinnis?
Here.
President Mandel?
Here.
The President of the City of Long Beach, Acting City Manager John Moreno, and Acting Corporation Council Rich Barrios, Madison, to the flag.
Okay, we'll begin with our city managers' report.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone who came out and enjoyed the event this past weekend, including the snowflake race on Saturday, February 1, 2020, to honor the memory of Joe Farrell, as well as the thousands of folks who joined us on Super Bowl Sunday for the 20th anniversary of All Over Plunge, by the David Edward Foundation. February marks Black History Month, join friends and neighbors at the Long Beach Library next Wednesday, February 12, for an open mic night celebrating the contributions of African-Americans to literature and songs. Participate in the outreach, perform poetry, show up for reading, acoustic music performance, and monologues, and write poems, and whatnot. Visit longbeachlibrary.wal for more info and events in advance. Last week, County Executive Laura Carden visited Long Beach to announce and award $150,000 for the Nassau County Community Development Office Transit Orient Development Initiative, funding which does not require a match from the city, which will be used to enhance safety and quality of life in and around the train station, including cross-sol lighting, weight binding, and plant hitting. The city will work with the county to determine specific projects, the funding, and the procurement of the home when the draft plan is in place. Thank you to our staff for their hard work and security to spread. Given the current coronavirus outbreak in China and near China's presence in Long Beach, our officer emergency manager contacted the Nassau County Officer Emergency Management as well as the Nassau County Health Department, and they have assured us that any airline staff coming into Kennedy Airport on air China flights are screened just like passengers and should not pose any risks. Visit www.ctc.gov for more. As many of you will hear, Dave Fraser is serving presently as president of the Long Island's Village Clarks Association, and they are running their food drive. We have a food drive box in the lobby, and this is the March for Hunger, which will be presented in March at the March meeting of the, uh... The March meeting of the Village Clarks Association. So let's see if we can really fill these up and make things look good. Lastly, the Houston Spirits Initiative, the street lights on the board. As a result of weathering from wind and salt, there are seven light fixtures fell to the ground. The city's street lighting maintenance contractor, Wellsback Electric, was dispatched to inspect all the boardwalk light pole fixtures. After inspecting 113 light fixtures, where 45 were required to be removed, and the remaining light fixtures were barricaded at the base in the event that any event becomes. Public Works and the Officer Corporation Council are working to resolve this issue with the vendor, utilizing design expertise from Wellsback and Magna Flood. Magna Flood is a lighting company not involved in designing the current boardwalk lights, and will provide updates as we move forward.
We're going to try something new as well. We're going to give a council update after the city manager gives his update. So the city council would like to recognize that February is Black History Month. The theme of Black History Month is African-Americans and the vote. 2020, an important general election year, is also a landmark year for voting rights. 2020 marks the 150th anniversary of the 15th Amendment in 1870, which gave the right of black men to vote following civil war. The council of Spohrich collaborated with the cities, schools, and communities in the event scheduled to celebrate this month. Last Monday evening, Vice President McGinnis and President Bendo met with the Long Beach Chamber of Commerce and helped hand out awards for the electric light parade in the holiday window. Congratulations to all, especially the city's press department and Jamie Lynch. Councilman Delory attended the Catholic school event, and he gave a proclamation acknowledging the work of the Long Beach Catholic School. He also attended the Power Snowflake Run and handed out awards to the top vendors. There were over 500 registrars, so a huge thank you to Kerry Lee Troy, Brian Cagney, and Paul Ferranti, our auxiliary PD department, and our CFA. Always getting up extra early that these events can go on without a hitch. As Acting City Manager stated, this flash is bigger than ever. A heartfelt thank you to everyone, as it is one of the city's best days to shine and show the rest of the world we are more than just a beach. I'd also like to recognize Long Island Street for the 150K grants that the city received, the other nonprofits, and the Long Beach Chamber. The CRS Committee meeting that led us, I've been advocating for this not only in Long Beach, but the flood vulnerable communities on Long Island. Most of us have flood insurance through NIFA, hence being switchable. As an area at risk, we may have to pay more for our insurance as females change their mass. It's something I will continue to advocate against with our legislature. Meantime, we need you to take the flood plain management plan for the city of Long Beach survey. It's on the city's Facebook page as well as the city's webpage. The Spanish language version should be up soon. It is important that every business and residence submit their response. Working to get a better percentage rate is akin to your most difficult academic career. You get a quarter point for good power usage. City gets points for community engagement, so let's all engage. With that, I turn the proceeding back to President Bendo.
Just on a nice mic, Robinson, the Director of Transportation will come up and redo this.
Okay, tonight, we have two buses. We'd like to purchase the Transportation Department, and we're replacing two buses that were damaged during Hurricane Sandy. They've been gone for a couple of years. We had the FDA to agree to replace them outright. So this is a, it's kind of like, you know, when you get the new thing for your house, you have to buy something that is there. So these are two diesel buses. People asked questions earlier about the 100% electric. I can't wait to go 100% electric. So the plan is that we could replace five buses now, just do one to this grant. Three of the buses, they come up for the usual, like, for just 10 years. We will be looking to get electric buses, but there are some things attached to that. One is the facility, the central project facility. It's very old, older than this building. And right now, we don't have the house going out here. It did get sixty of water in it. So if we're going to do that kind of upgrade to the building, where we're going to put in breakers and working with LIFA to get that all done, I believe we would have to justify that to get the FDA and the Department of Facility. We have been talking with Public Works for at least the last two, three years, looking at different spots in town to figure out, do we relocate the facility? I mean, I personally think it would be best to get it off the road. To raise it, you wouldn't be able to get in the equipment and just not remove the property to do that. Also, if you get an electric bus that has to plug in, I think it defeats the purpose that you're going to power from fossil fuels to power. So if you like to put solar panel on the roof, it would be a long plan to say, this is a major project, we're switching over. So that's the first. The industry itself, because New York and California are the biggest transit, high transportation buses in the industry, they both have deadlines, maybe it's 2030 or 2040, to go on to that. So the industry itself will start to change. Do you get an electric bus now, $900,000? We have to down the charge rate, it's about four hours to charge it. The other thing is to, we buy about 30 foot buses, and the industry is small, most of them are 40 foot. So as that opens up, we have more options for different manufacturers to get a smaller bus. There's also an issue with the heating system, where if you put enough power, you heat the bus with the electric. So that's the planned apartment. Hopefully, soon we'll be able to come back within a year. Because if we like to buy buses, for first, obviously, we have a plan for the building to get that all together.
Mike, these buses, you know, the diesel do have clean air facilities on them also, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's the, you know, the blue stuff they put in. I mean, listen, they're a lot cleaner than they were five years ago. Obviously, 10 years ago, even when it was worth, trucks were cleaner. It's, they're a lot cleaner. I mean, it's a, you know, it's not 100%, obviously, we'd like to go electric now, but just with the, with the work and what we have. We want to finish up the Sandy Grant, move ahead. If we were to add an electric bus now, we'd have to add additional money, I mean, to get grant money. I remember we're about finding funding anyways, we're, there's tons of funding out there for the facility, but, you know, I'd rather do that first, as far as...
Any questions in the council?
Just one, would we back him off, can I get DOT contract? Just, I guess this is a question, where, I'm assuming that was the best deal we could get, was piggybacking like that?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we're probably, one of us will piggyback, and it's easier to get, you know, favorable prices, so a lot of them put on options for other municipalities to buy off, or states. I mean, the resolution says we can see it be 18 months, it's going to be longer than that, because after you're lined, you're only getting two. You know, you're getting some like New York City, or, you know, Jersey Transit, that are a couple hundred buses at a time, so trying to fit in and find the best prices.
All right, questions from the public?
I got any, keep it going, Steve. After the storm, as you know, we don't have... We were offered a brand new building from the federal government for a bus. Brand new, with of course, it's hardly anything. And that was the time really to strike, the train left after that. It was a no-brainer, okay? So that building couldn't have been built there. And we know that the city garage is really not up to snuff anymore. So, Mr. Robinson, I hate to say it, but he was here in control at that time. He blew that. I mean, almost 100% for the federal government to build a new garage. Mr. Mandel was here tonight. Anyway, as far as these two new buses, they're two diesels, they're short buses. Who did the actual, the grant work on that? Mr. Robinson, do you know? Do you know, Mr.?
Yes, myself and Brendan Costello.
And he said himself and Mr. Brendan Costello. From what I know, over the years, and I've been around, that grant money was available two years ago. We're two years late on those two new buses, and we need desperately. Okay? So that would make 10 buses once we get them. The hybrids are still working, which is great, I love it. At least somebody's doing their job. But we had 13 buses in that garage, and you know why we can't fit them? Because there's junk in there. Junk. 13 buses we had in there. Okay, so again, I'm getting back to that same thing again, you know, Mr. Mandel, John? I love you, baby, but I just had to say what I had to say. Thank you.
If I could just respond, because I was addressed directly?
Yeah.
Mr. Baggie, I appreciate your comments and your time.
Yes.
For certainly taking coming up here. I was here during Sandy, I was present after Sandy. You exploit each and every opportunity available to this city. I don't recall any such offer of rebuilding a garage.
Okay, I, I believe you, I believe you, but...
Maybe, sir, maybe your memory's...
No, it was there.
Sir?
It was there, 100% there.
And...
We lost, I mean, you can research, but it was there.
I'm not dating with you, maybe your memory is better than mine?
But not only my memory, I was working in the garage for 28 years. I was there, and the time is 2016, so I think I'm correct.
Sir, maybe your memory's better than mine? I'll defer to that.
No.
What I can tell you is I sit up here now, each and every opportunity that is available to the city. We even extended ourselves to the hospital, and we asked that we could go in, because we have the National Guard, and we had all resources available to us. If that was an option to us, in my recollection, it was possible. I'll look into it, because I have personal interests, because I'll check that. But my recollection, that wasn't an option available to us.
Well, I...
We wouldn't take...
I dispute it. Again, I'm on top of that, I was a driver and supervisor. So it might have, listen, there was a lot going on at that time.
I was the council president, we all had our roles to play. My recollection is, I don't recall any option.
It doesn't mean you're right. I, I think I'm right.
Mr. Robinson, is this feeble money or voter money?
This is the federal transportation money. And the question goes back to the ride, is it's six feet low, you know, what? You can't raise it where it currently is. The money will be available tomorrow if we wanted it. The problem is, where can we put it? It's, you cannot raise it, you're not going to fit fire trucks, the buses aren't going to get in. That's the issue, it's, it's not...
You're saying you're getting money from the FDA, what do you think?
The FDA is paying for the buses.
Right, but not for the garage?
Garage is a mixed-use facility, so you're not going to get 90% of the money for the buses, because they're going to say, what percentage of the garage is used for public transit? You know, we work on police cars, fire trucks, they're not going to pay for that. So you're going to have to figure it out and say, all right, it's 60%, 65% is for public transit, that's what they pay for. 90% of that, you know, for new facility, or for whatever. The problem is, is where it is located is inadequate. You know, you're never going to be able to raise it for the, to get it out of the flood area, unless you use it as a new facility. So you need a new location.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Ballashevich, she's old.
I'm asking her that.
Just be glad she's not asking me, she's just letting me go before. In any event, Jacob from Long Beach, just a couple of points of clarification. Are there still buses on the road today that are in service during Hurricane Sandy?
No, these are neither, these are everything else. The two blue ones that you see?
Mr. Robinson, I'm going to ask you, stop and please come up and talk to the microphone, so everyone has an opportunity to hear you.
We have three buses that are currently in service that were still left over from Sandy. During the storm, some buses were parked up on the Long Beach Bridge. Some windows got blown out and stuff like that. Those are the ones that are currently operated today, they didn't get any saltwater intrusion. The buses we're replacing didn't get destroyed, but they did a lot of evacuations afterwards. You know, all that stuff got up into the engine departments, into the electrical and natural space, and the corrosion was too poor. But we did actually look at one point, to have it already done. It was decided with the FDA that we're going to go that route, and just replace it.
Fair, I'm all for, I'm all for, those buses being paid for by federal funds. But I think that the council might want to consider paying a little more attention to the word of the resolution that I'm fighting for. It sounds to me like, based on Mr. Robinson's description, that these buses were destroyed by Sandy, and they continue to operate, and continue in service, and continue in service until today. Again, like I said, I don't have a problem, you know, if we're federal government giving out money, I don't need to scare the money yet, but let's feel a little more careful, I think, right?
Any other comments?
I have two, the resolution authorizing the Acting City Manager, excuse me, to purchase Miss Lady's general hardware items on a half-need basis.
Anytime we purchase, the city hopes to purchase any type of material or supplies that they exceed 20,000, these can be, you know, hardware-type items. We need to go out and score a visible bid. We don't limit the reward to anyone bidder. So we had three bidders, we were able to win three, and depending on the item that we're purchasing, or, you know, work that goes on day to day, and prepares, you know, you'll take the best price from anyone of the three. It also does not stop us from going out and pricing it at an additional defender, where we might be to get something more, and what's even on the bid.
All right, before we move on, we've got to make a quick amendment to this. So I'd like to propose to amend, where it says two bids, the resolution to three, so you receive three bids. So with that, any questions from the council? Just one, how do we, when we do these, how do we tie back, like, something that goes up the case and buys slots? How do we tie that back to a department, or is it tied back to a department project?
Well, each department will fill out a purchase rec or blanket order at each one of these, and then depend on the department. And the superintendent of the department, if he needs, you know, a hardware project they're working on, he'll send one of the employees to pick it up, we get a receipt for it. When it comes back, we attach all the receipts, the purchase order, when it gets there, we plan to pay it. It's audited by the superintendent of that department, then it comes up to the department. Typically, these are beach payments, items and street payments. They'll come up to Public Works, Public Works will review and audit it, and then it goes to the controller's office where they sign off, make sure it's not seen budgeted, and, you know, we will, invoices are attached, and then it comes to the city manager to sign off.
Any questions from the public? Okay, say nothing.
I have three, the resolution authorizing the Acting City Manager to purchase various chemicals on a half-need basis, for a word verification by the local municipal bidders.
Okay, these, these are annual bids for our treatment chemicals that we use as the water treatment plan. First, for lube and sulfate, we received four bids. This bid came in 1.8 cents, five per gallon, and then last year, we use about 48,000 gallons a year, so it's an increase over last year of $878. We typically spend about $51,000 on those chemicals. On the hydrated line, actually, that was a reduction of 48,000. On a hydrated line, we've had an increase per ton of $5. We typically use about 88 tons a year, so that's an increase cost for next year of about $440. Plus, the usage on chemicals can change depending how much water we need to treat. Plus, the usage on chemicals can change depending on what water we need to treat in Hong Kong.
Any questions from the council?
I just have one. Um, we received four bids, but there's two listed, I guess?
No, we received, uh, four bids on aluminum sulfate and we received two bids on hydrated line bulk.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions from the public?
Well, listen, I'm not sure I like that right. You said that, uh, you use about eighty-eight tons of the hydrated line?
That's on average, based on average well. We some... Yes, if we have a very wet year, we may use less. If we have a very dry year, we may use more. Generally, works out to about, uh, you know, no more than twenty tons either way.
But the amount of money that you told me about here, twenty-five available for the remainder of this year, and then the sixty-four for next year, that comes out to like four hundred and thirty-eight, four hundred and twenty-three tons. Why would you need so much?
So that includes both chemicals, aluminum sulfate and that. We spend typically, as I said, typically we'll spend about fifty-one thousand dollars on aluminum sulfate a year and typically about nineteen thousand on hydrated line.
What you looked at should have been a paragraph.
Okay.
It was locked in, it's just, it looks like it's just for the line.
Right.
It's actually for both.
Yeah, okay.
Should have been a paragraph. Hey, any other comments?
I have four as a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of a local law amendment advising the charter of the city regarding the city manager. Besides publication only, here we'll be helped by the way, yeah. Reiterate the amendment, I'm sorry.
Yes, so I would like to, uh, propose an amendment that we replace, uh, what's currently listed in the, uh, this week's resolution with this updated one, which will be posted on the city website tomorrow morning.
Second?
I will.
Lord, you have some of the word?
Yes.
I'm going to add that. President, yes. President, yes.
Yes.
Passes. I have no time as a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of a local law amendment advising the charter of the city regarding the city manager. Besides publication only, here we'll be helped by the way, yeah. I believe the motion on this side.
I would like to, uh, propose an amendment to replace what's currently in the resolution with, uh, the amended, uh, changes here, which will be posted on the city website tomorrow morning.
Second?
I will.
Lord, you have some of the word?
Yes.
That's under the word?
Yes.
President, yes.
Yes.
President, yes.
Yes.
I have four as a resolution authorizing the acting city manager to purchase two dilly Volclore diesel buses. Just move the adoption aside.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Lord, you have some of the word?
Yes.
That's under the word?
Yes.
President, yes.
Yes.
President, yes.
Yes.
I have three as a resolution authorizing the acting city manager to purchase Miss Lady's general hardware items on an as-needed basis. Just move the adoption aside.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Lord, you have some of the word?
Yes.
That's under the word?
Yes.
That's under the word?
Yes.
President, yes.
Yes.
I have three as a resolution authorizing the acting city manager to purchase various chemicals on an as-needed basis for a warrant purification plan from the lowest responsible bidders. Just move the adoption aside. Second?
I will.
Lord, you have some of the word?
Yes.
That's under the word?
Yes.
President, yes.
Yeah.
President, yes.
Yes.
I have four as a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of a local law amendment advising the charter of the city regarding the city manager. Just move the adoption aside.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Lord, you have some of the word?
Uh, I just wanted, before I go against, it's going to be on the website tomorrow, and how will the current, will the current one be moved in this one?
No, it'll be listed with the proceedings, and it'll be listed in amendment four, amendment nine, time.
Thank you.
Any separate here for it?
Separate, thank you. I go with the answer.
Councilor, under the word?
Yes.
President, yes.
Yes.
President, yes.
Yes.
Finally, I have five as a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of a law amendment advising the charter of the city regarding the city manager. Just move the adoption aside.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Lord, you have some of the word?
Yes.
That's under the word?
Yes.
President, yes.
Yes.
President, yes. City manager's personnel, who is followed by the city clerk, who made a motion for his meeting? Lord, you have some of the word?
Yes.
That's under the word?
Yes.
President, yes.
Yes.
Hey, folks, it's everyone's favorite time, good and well fair, so... Hope people hope really get three minutes, and I'll just fill in time until we get the people sheets, telling them jokes. There we go. Miss Packardine! Oh, okay.
I'm here, Mrs. Ballas Street. Go to the back there. Did you make the proposal for the change in the charters?
Yes.
Well, I agree. I agree. I applaud you. I applaud you that what you're doing is probably the best thing you've ever had here, okay?
Horrible.
Can I get three minutes? Wait for your three minutes. Excuse me.
Twenty.
You basically, you basically told the parties of power that basically it's like a joke. I'm glad that you will be the guardians of the city right now, and you will watch the big shots, the managers, the commissioners, and I'm sure you're going to do it. To me, what you did was like thirty years working for the city. It's like the Declaration and the U.S. Constitution all in one. Thank you.
So just to clarify, we didn't actually, this is a cast, we just noticed the public hearing for it, which will be in the next meeting.
Yeah.
But, uh, Mr. Packardine, I'd just like to add, um, as you well know, during the season of campaigning, I think it was almost universally talked about from every single candidate, yourself included, myself, whether you're there or here.
It don't matter.
It doesn't matter, right?
No.
And I don't think anybody objected. A lot of people didn't understand it, but the specific nature of the changes, um, I have to give a lot of credit to a lot of people up here.
Oh, yeah. I can see it's a full effort for all you guys, and I really do appreciate it, and, uh, I can't thank you enough. Like I said, thirty years with the city. I've seen it all. Okay, and basically, you're doing a great thing. I'm all for you. I'm still for you. You've still got time to make the changes you have to make. Good luck, and thank you.
Thank you.
Within recent origin, Long Beach was rated one of the two top financially distressed cities in the state. We were facing to float a two-million-dollar bond issue to pay off present debt, and yet I do not see any actions to start working on an emergency budget that may include but not limited to a hiring freeze, reduction in services, or even possible layoffs. As a concerned resident, I want issues addressed. I do not see it being done or have not heard of it yet by you, the city council, or the acting city manager. Please explain.
Okay, I'm not sure, I mean, the, we're starting our budget cycle right now for the next fiscal year, and our new comptroller is hunkering down with department heads along with the acting city manager. They're going to have some marching orders about what can and can't happen. Um, obviously, the focus right now is staying on budget for this year to make sure we stay on budget, but I'm not sure what... We have to have a picture of what's going on before we start taking steps, which is what is going on right now. We're getting a picture of what's going on. Otherwise, we just, it's a shotgun, it's a scattergun process otherwise.
Okay, that's good to hear. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Right. The budget process is this year is starting two months earlier than it normally would start. So it's... I guess people don't see it because this is happening in the office from nine to five.
I've been through twenty years and I'm getting, and I'm becoming involved, and it is...
That's good.
It's a concern.
Sure.
And it's an emergency.
Yep.
It's Donovan. My name is Karen, and we are, um, in the midst of communicating some objectives and criteria that we expect from Mr. Morando in terms of the current year budget and next year's budget. These expectations will be clearly stated, explicit, and will, that we expect that they will be followed.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Antonio Pecroche. I'm with Glenn Coad. I'm the founder and president of the Long Man Women's Suffragette Association. I have some packets here for you. As you know, that twenty-twenty is the centennial of not only, um, not only, it's not only an important election year, but it's the centennial of women getting the vote for practical applications in the U. D. Committee and all this. I have been trying for almost two years now to have a historical marker placed on the boardwalk in Long Beach honoring the suffragists. Uh, Long Beach was a very busy place in the suffrage years. It was very active in the suffrage movement, and the hotels had suffrage conferences and suffrage speeches. And one of the women in particular, Edna Buckman Kearns, would go to outside the Long Beach Hotel and, uh, give out pamphlets and have a wagon and have voiceless speeches. So Long Beach was very active in the suffrage movement. What I'm asking from you is a letter of permission saying that I will be able to place the marker. Then I need to go for funding. The Palmer Foundation gives funding markers across the nation, across the island, so I will be able to get funding hopefully if I get permission from the city to place it. And I'm also asking, once we get it, that the city of Long Beach will install it. Uh, it would be appropriate to have it near Riverside Boulevard, which is where the hotel was. I'm hoping that you can do that. It has to be on property that the city controls. It can't be accounting for something that the city doesn't control. I have also gotten two, uh, funding, two markers, one in Glenn Coad and one in Hennington, and we're very successful in that. It's a very popular thing, and I'm hoping that you agree with me and that you'll give me a letter of permission. It's all in your packet there. You have a sample from the city of Glenn Coad, the mayor of Glenn Coad, the T-Song. Uh, three years ago, there's also a picture of Edna Buckman Kearns in the wagon, and the hotel is behind her. And you also have an article in the New York Times telling you the whole story, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
I just have a question. Do you have an actual location of the marker of where you want this?
Pretty much near Riverside Boulevard.
No, we can, we can...
That's where the Castle Hotel was.
So you would...
And it was like you're on the boardwalk, and you could see it.
Is it the same size that's in this photo?
Yes.
Or something?
Yes, but there was, I don't think the boardwalk was here then, so...
No, I mean, the picture that you have in Glenn Coad, the plaque.
Oh, that's just a sample.
So it's that the same size too?
Yes, it is that same. The Palmer Foundation had various regulations about the lettering and the writing and everything else.
I appreciate it. I look like the help of Long Beach history.
Okay, so, uh...
I don't know what the next step is.
I'm going to ask the city managers, we have the contact information, so...
Okay.
They'll contact you, and you two can coordinate on what you need to get.
Yes, I need the letter for the funding, the funding window opening beginning of April. And I did speak to Palmer last night, and they said if I can get my ducks in a row, I have a very good chance of funding this one as well.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mary Ballas at Long Beach. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank the Light Cross, Fire Fighters Police Department, and the CSDA Beach Maintenance for taking care of everybody at the toll there, um, event. Um, I have a question. Are you still being advised by Mr. Mon... I don't have to say his name. Monary?
Uh, occasionally.
And do all...
Give me a hint. Uh, no.
No?
No.
Okay. Maybe you don't even mind if I leave it there? Uh, you know, the more, it gives people more to put into the discussion, if everybody is there.
It's just a matter of, it's also, you can make it. It's not, everybody's invited.
Okay. Um, and have we ever been paid for the two LBGZ events in family? I know they owed us some money. Did we ever get the money? And if we didn't get the money, why did you allow them to have a second one? Who are we looking at?
They just, they just owe us, we billed them for the last, uh, event. They paid us for the first event, and they haven't paid us for the second one yet. They have been billed for it. Generally, they, it takes till they get their grant from the state for them to make the payment to us.
Okay, and I, well, I read somewhere that they're in a little financial trouble, so...
Well, they didn't get a grant this year from the state, but this would be last year's grant, uh, for the, for the one they ran last summer here. So the grants take a while to come through. Once the grant comes through, they'll need to pay them to us as far as...
Okay, well, I, I don't have a problem with their event, but they should pay in a timely manner. You know, I, I can't say to you, I gotta wait for a check to pay my taxes. They should pay in a timely manner. We waited a long time for the first one. You weren't, you weren't involved in that. Well, we waited a long time for that first one. We are in dire straits financially, and they should not be allowed, I'm sorry, to have an event if they owe money. They should not go on a calendar to have an event if they owe money.
Just for informational purposes, since they did not get a grant this year from the state, they are not having their event here in Long Beach this year.
Okay, Scott Pananelle and Alex, handwriting is, I'm going to say, Bogalaski.
That was very close, or bad handwriting. You know, we live on Heron Street. I'm Alex, that's Scott. Um, most, it's unusual, we talked earlier about flood plan and flood planning, so about three years ago, I wrote a memo. Actually, I wrote several memos with photos of flooding on Heron Street, the members of the city council. So that's how we met Mr. Morando, and he informed me of a project that was underway, just starting to get, to get money from GOSA to do something about flood control and to talk about it. And I don't know if any of you have been down to Heron Street, but it's kind of interesting to watch what's being done, because we're getting some bulk handling in there that's at standards, and they're doing an excellent job of it. And I don't think we would have got... And I don't think we would have gotten that without the support of the council, without the support of John and John's team and the work they did. Because apparently, getting money from GOSR or from the federal government requires a little bit more than a telephone call. So, we started the work, it's going reasonably well for a project with this magnitude and size. I anticipate we'll have some lumps with it, that's normal for a large project. The contractor's doing a pretty good job, you know, I gotta look at it every day, Scott does as well. So, you know, congratulations, you got a great start, something's working well, and now you're faced with the problem of succeeding with the success, because the public lands are just a small piece of the flood plan and the flood control problem. So, I'm expecting the council, Mr. Morando, and Mr. Morando's team to show some leadership in identifying other mitigants to help flood control in the city. But congratulations on a good start. Thank you, Scott.
Yeah. So, I've been living, I've been living in Long Beach for now more than half my life. I own multiple properties in Long Beach. Combined, I pay well into sixty thousand dollars on property taxes, and that's just two properties in Long Beach. One of them does happen to be on the water. With that being said, I've experienced multiple administrations, and I've dealt with multiple heads at public works, and I've dealt with multiple City Managers. And I had gotten absolutely shunned, abused would be probably a better word, by Mr. Schnerman to be specifically, and Mr. Lacaruba to be specifically, who never once, even with us sending videos, sending emails that my children, who I have four, were late to school six to nine times a year, because on High Five, we had knee-high deep water being the last house on Laurel and Channel. I know my time's up, but Alex says three, and I'm gonna take my three, if that's okay, I appreciate it. So I'll finish up here in a quick second.
All right, just wrap up.
Sure. So, to make this quick, I will say this, I had no communication whatsoever with anybody before John took over, none. John has been a savior for my block and my family. I would have picked up and moved. I mean, we were years into Third World Country living, and that was out of the mouth of Senator Todd Kaminsky, who also helped out and came down and saw what was going on, which was only going on at the north end of the canal, so nobody really knew about it, aside from the people that lived at the north end of the canals. So I want to say thank you, John, and for his crew that got a hold of this and communicated every step of the way. And when I tell you every step of the way, returned every phone call, showed up at the end of the block, put together meetings on the block with homeowners. So thank you, John, really appreciate that. And one other thing, I'll say this too, for people that don't know this, me and John started as a business relationship, trying to shore up the block, and it's developed into a personal relationship. So I know something about John, I know the City Council knows this too, but maybe not everybody in Long Beach knows this, and I think they should. And without being specific, all right, John's been going through a family tragedy in his life for quite some time now, that I don't know if anybody in this room, including myself, would be able to handle and be able to even come to work every day, let alone be here in the morning and be here at this time in the evening. John, I love you, okay? I know what you're going through, I know the council knows what he's going through, and I've seen this man cry, I've seen my father cry, I've seen my grandfather cry. Two most respectful men in my life. Don't tell me, all right, that you're being disrespectful. Have some empathy, okay? If you know, then you should be ashamed for saying that. This is a great man who loves his family, and I love you. Great job.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I was not on the council before when your project started, but when I saw the Harren Street project on the table in January, my biggest concern was after the project was started, the phone calls or the emails from residents not knowing. And it appears to me, based upon what you just said, that there was ample communication in advance, letting everybody know what was going on, and thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Mack?
Good evening, my name is Tom Mack. I've lived on the Great West Community for over forty years, lived in Long Beach four years prior, worked in Long Beach, and four years prior to living here. In all these years I've been here, I've seen the good prepared and the ugly of Long Beach politics over all these years. The reputation of the local leaders has been tarnished over the years, because a few people put themselves above the taxpaying residents' best interests. With this, it seems like anyone who sits where you folks are becomes targets of many negative identities for a wrong reasons. Tonight, I come here to speak on behalf of John Miranda. I have known John for over fifty years. John and I grew up in Lockton Center together. We grew up in the same neighborhood, we went to high school together, we socialized together. I can tell you that John is a very dedicated family man, very good friend, and a strong supporter of his community. At Lockton Center, he served as fire chief and many other positions, and did many other things for his community. There was never anything that John wouldn't do for anyone else, he couldn't put anyone else above his own. John recently made his residence in Long Beach, and he wants to give his all to make Long Beach a better place to live. I hope everyone in our city can look at John for what he can and will do, and not categorize, categorize him. As another Long Beach politician, personally, I would trust John Morando with my life. And with that, I also, what the Chief General just said also is very true, certainly when he spoke, definitely knew what he was talking about. With that, I would like to add a little bit, since I have a little time left, I guess. I would like to ask all the residents of Long Beach who love to remind us of the problems that we have here, instead, bring solutions to the problems. We have a very diverse city with smart people from all walks of life, and there are many people who have great ideas and need to speak and contribute in positive ways. Let's make 2020 the year of the solution, not the problem. Good luck to this new council, I truly, wholly believe that you guys are gonna do a great job. I've been supporting you since the election, and hopefully Eric will turn a great role in Long Beach. Thank you, good sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mack, I just want to say thank you for your service on the CRS Committee, as well as when you decorated September Walker as a judge.
Thank you. And thank you for also, you know, coming up and telling a good story. A lot of times, all we hear in good welfare is the bad, you know, it's nice to hear the good too for some people sometimes.
That's my point.
So with that, thank you. Nora Egan.
Tom, I know you have a funny story. Nora Egan, just two questions really quickly. Where are the RFPs? Are they in the state park, or where are they at this? What do I want?
They're in, well, the, yeah, the market. Sorry. They do get published in the Tribune, they are listed on the website, they're also listed in the...
Oh, where on the website?
If you search for RFPs, it will come up to the purchasing section, which has, it will show our, I don't know the exact title of it, I think it says vendors RFPs.
Okay. And then my second question, is Mr. Capizola still on payroll, or has Toby terminated it?
Mr. Capizola was never on payroll.
Well, I mean, is he still here for the city, somewhere, representing his own group of the city?
He's still available if needed.
And is he still being paid by, yes, by the, if he's needed?
Well, if he does any more proceeds, paid by the city.
By the city. And how much is he being paid then?
I haven't seen an invoice in a while.
I haven't seen an invoice in a while either, but I keep looking through my logs.
The last number I saw, which was ninety months ago, was ninety-two thousand, but that was a while ago.
Yeah. So he hasn't done anything since, hopefully?
We can get back to you with a definitive answer.
Or should I reject Mr. Ray?
We will get back to you.
Okay. And actually, just speaking of that, I did email all of you, and I didn't get a reply from anybody except Nora.
About, I'm sorry, when did you send the email to Meg or...
Two weeks ago. The day after, I'll ask you.
Can you repeat what you wrote? It was about City Manager?
Yeah. But I didn't get a reply from anybody except, we just, when you just say that...
That's what I mean, answer.
Oh, yeah, with acknowledgement of an email. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Eileen Hesch. Eileen Hesch, did you want to commit a missap... Before I mention this, I'd like to thank the City Council and the City Manager for responding to me regarding a problem that I had for it at the last meeting. I just handed out a picture to you of the two pools in the Hebrew Academy. They are really an attractive nuisance. They're full of water, you can see the kids have already gotten over the fence and over there because they're graffiti. There are broken bottles, there are broken windows, the playground area is unsightly, but I'm really more concerned about this attractive nuisance. The people who own the Hebrew Academy should come and clean it up and take care of it so it's not a hazard, but I'm afraid if somebody does get hurt there, the first one to sue is them, but I have a feeling that the city might be liable as well. So, that's it. The second thing is, I know the work sessions have been described as the Thursday in between the two City Council meetings, and I think also described as the Thursday of the month, but it didn't quite work out right on my calendar, so I'm just hoping that you will continue to advertise the dates when you'll be having the work sessions.
Thank you.
I just have one question. These pictures, yes, these pictures, is there a date or a timestamp or anything?
I took them on Super Bowl Sunday.
So these are very recent?
Yeah.
I remember this was a similar issue that was brought up maybe a year or two ago, about the pool and the drainage. Would you say that for these pictures, this is, I can't tell if it's dirty rainwater or...
It's dirty rainwater, but it's, there's a lot of water in there. I mean, a kid could drown in there, you know?
Okay.
But it's also gross, it's probably not a good health thing to have there.
This session, and do you give a copy of this picture that Mr. Kevin, you seen it?
I did not.
So, the City Manager, he'll send the department over the head?
Thank you.
Mr. Lester.
Well, okay, if you'd be with a spirit, I thought I'd have a suggestion. In schoolboy, we always used to put the proclamations on the agenda. I know I've mentioned it before, it would be really nice if we know that there are going to be proclamations, and it's kind of nice for the people who are getting it to see their names on the agenda, and they have a souvenir and stuff like that. It's really just a little bit of printing, really not too much to do, so if you could maybe do it. And then I have some questions. Mr. Capizola, is he still retained by the city? I couldn't quite get an answer to that.
If retainment was not canceled at the event, he was needed for anything either.
So he's still retained.
He's still retained, yes.
Okay.
And for that specific.
And do you know how much we've paid Ingram and Smith so far?
Ingram and Smith is our counsel for several issues, so that, can you specify your question, please?
No, no. Pay Ingram Smith is one for me, so I don't know what you, what they're counsel for, nobody knows what they're counsel for, so if you, you know, that's why I asked as a general one. I'm glad that they're your counsel. I'm not criticizing that, I'm just asking what it costs us, but it's not gonna...
Yeah, I don't have a front end side, we can find out what you know.
If you can find out, yeah. Do we, did we ever hire a search firm for the City Manager search, or is that abandoned, or where are we with that?
It's in progress.
It's getting, you have to know your word, but, okay, good.
Yeah, could you please hurry up on that?
What is, yeah, in progress.
In progress. Every time I ask, or every time anyone asks, it's in progress, but that's all. The other question, the bulkhead on Harren, the bulkhead. It's about six feet high right now, I mean, it's huge, and is, are they going to cut that down to make it even with the other bulkhead, the newer bulkhead that's at the end of the block?
No.
It's gonna stay that height?
It's gonna stay, it's gonna stay at elevation nine. That's one of the lowest roads down in the town section. The elevation of the road in that section is four feet, so the actual height of it is five feet when it's done, but when we do finally get to do a road reconstruction on that, we are gonna raise that road somewhat when we do the road reconstruction.
But now you have the bulkhead at the end, so the water will just come over that?
That bulkhead is not that far off of it, and...
It is, John, take a look at it.
I'm down there every day, yeah.
Yeah, so I see it every day, and it is quite a difference, you know, maybe three or four feet, which is not long.
No, it's accurate.
I'll bring pictures. Okay, now the other side of the street, you're going to do a bulkhead, and the city would charge people in their taxes? Whatever happened to that? You had to sign up for it and then...
As far as...
Yeah, the program is still there. We're speaking to bond council, we have to work on this issue of being able to use bond money on private property. So what we have to work out is how we can come up with an easement with the property owners in order to do that bulkhead. You can't take money, the money would come from the bond, but the bonding company or bond council director, we can't do that, co-work on private property. So, even though they're reimbursing us for it, so we're working on legally, how do we do this easement to get the bulkhead in and then be able to bond and stuff.
Okay.
And we actually have about twenty-five applications so far.
Yeah, we just never heard anything about this, which pretty much is Boyd Street was going to be young, that was one of those...
Yeah, design is still going on, that probably won't take place, though, maybe in fall this year.
Okay. And the city charter, they vote for that, is that, is that going to be the meeting after the hearing?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Steve Candy.
Steve Candy, ten West East Street. Roy's last question, Mike is the question, I'm gonna go for the answer. The timing of how this works for the city charter changes, how does it work from this point forward? What is the, what is the path we look at? What is, what is how people look at it, like you said, online? And then when is the public hearing, do we actually talk about it? And when is the expected time to pass for a vote?
So tonight, the public hearing was noticed. Tomorrow, the updated changes will be on the website. The next meeting will be the public hearing changes. So obviously, people can come up, give their input, and changes that need to be made can be made. And then the following meeting, which will be the first meeting of March, would be the meeting where you actually vote on it.
And the last question would be then, if people have suggestions besides after meetings, is there another format to get suggestions or comments to the council? Best way to do that on this matter?
You can email us.
Just trade email, best way. And you can...
After, after comments, we can do it.
After you've been doing it.
Yeah, comment on the one that's gonna be posted tomorrow.
Right. And then the only comments we make are emails from that point in the realm.
I would suggest we email, email everybody.
If people were to email, then they should just say manager, that that would happen all night, I think. Because I don't think we think of, if you're thinking of you going across the board. Is that broad?
I would, I would email all of us, just because you don't want anybody overlooking it and some people have different time.
If I, if I get any of that, just email directly to the annual council.
Thank you. If all accounts are positive, guys, did a, thank you very much all of us.
Thank you. Joshua Siegel.
Joshua Siegel, 59 West Penn, also a business owner of Cafe Alive Chiropractic. Congratulations all the city council members. Thank you for really becoming cohesive and I think the city really needs to evolve instead of revolve. You know, we've seen in the city, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. So I really see a big difference. But one thing I came here tonight to share was the character of John Miranda. I drew Rocco Senna and his volunteer in the 345 apartment. I mean, I see a man here who has an amazing heart, you know, you can't train on heart to see what he's doing and his family right now going through a major challenge. He's dedicated his life. To me, that's something that, if you see the disposition, people have used this for a political stepping stone to the next step and to get a bigger career. This guy has no political agenda, he's got a heart of gold. And I think that's what the city really needs, something about being cohesive and working with the city council. So I just see a man here who is just an amazing human being and I thank him for what he's literally stepped into. You know, a lot of the things he hasn't chosen, but with all this crap going on, he's really doing what he says he does and he's a man of his word, really a man of God and his family. So thank you for being who you are. For the city council, when it comes to this charter, my question is, is have you looked at, mirror at other cities in New York State, see what they're doing? You know, a lot of times, you know, we use school lawyers or school attorneys and they know the schools. But to look at a city charter that there are so many details in that, that maybe we just don't know about it, and I know this is a big step we're taking with the city council, I mean, looked at other cities in New York to see what they're doing and to see what's really worked. But also to see, you know, this is not an overnight process as we know, but to really make permanent changes for the good of the city, you know, as a business owner here and raising a four-year-old, I love this city. I mean, I love taking care of the community. And one of my secretaries, Marley Lynn Morey, Morey Weller, who's been part of this community forever, and she, and you know, she's just no bullshit. And so I think that this is what we need right now, but to look at everything, small sequential steps to get the most out of everything, instead of thinking, you know, not that it's happening, but fly by the seat of pants, but really thinking about A to Z, see what's best in the long outcome, just like, you know, one thing that I know that John mentioned with the deuce and the engineering stuff, I mean, someone who has an engineering background thinks differently. He thinks differently how things work. So we need to look at every aspect. So the question of the city charter, what is the process and the plan to really get the most out of this to benefit the community?
Well, I guess, you know, I would suggest you look tomorrow morning, it's, the changes, they're pretty straight, they're pretty straightforward. The way the charter worked, I think it was 1939, I believe, Long Beach switched from a mayoral system to the city council system. But they never updated the city charter to really reflect the new form of government. They literally went in and where it said mayor, kind of lined it out and wrote city manager, and then a few pages in, got bored and stopped even doing that. So the charter is not reflective of the form, really of the form. This stuff in the charter, we were talking about it before the meeting, this stuff in the charter that this city hasn't done in decades. So it's, it's a severely out of date document. So what we're trying to do is, and this is not a sweeping overhaul by any means, so we're making some step changes here to try to bring the document up to current, how the city's being run.
My notice is a thankless job, but I wanted to say thank you to each of you. I really appreciate it.
I agree.
Thank you. And for second meeting in a row, our anchor man, Jay Gussman. Okay, with that, thank you for coming, folks, and get home safe.